We'll start with the first half. I've forgotten what to do, it's been so many weeks. Well, good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order the regular planning commission meeting in the city of Campbell, August twenty third, twenty twenty two. Mister clerk, if you'd like to do a roll call, please.
Present.
Commissioner Ravelin?
Present.
Commissioner Sizer?
Here.
Commissioner Ostrowski?
Here.
Commissioner Kamkar?
Yeah.
Commissioner Gray? Vice Chair Buckbinder?
Present.
Chair Ching?
I hear. Thank you. So moving on to the approval of the minutes. I believe there's two approvals, July the twelfth and July twenty six. And what's three and August, well, July, July the twelfth, twenty twenty two approval of minutes, July twenty sixth and August the ninth. The planning commission meetings were cancelled. Has everybody had an opportunity to look at the minutes? And do I hear anybody proposing approval?
I need no to approve the minutes as they are in the packet.
Thank you. Hold a second.
Okay, and could we have a voice vote, please? Commissioner Ravelin?
Aye.
Commissioner Sizer? Commissioner Ostrowski?
Aye.
Commissioner Kamkar?
Aye.
Commissioner Gray, well, Captain. Vice Chair Buckbinder?
Aye.
Chair Ching?
Aye. Thank you. Community Development Director, do we have any communications modifications or postponements tonight?
No, we do not. And again, I just want to thank the commission for the flexibility on starting just a little bit early. The advantage is you'll get out a little bit earlier, but in addition to that, no communications or agenda modifications. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. So we'll move to the section of all requests. This is the point on the agenda where members of the public may address the commission on items of concern to the community that are not listed on the agenda this evening. People may speak up to five minutes on any matter concerning the commission. So I'll open it. There will be online. Okay, which one I'll close it. So moving on to the two items for tonight. We have a special presentation by commissioners Bookbinder and Kamkar. And then the second session being the study session. So with that. Shall we start with the special presentation question?
Thank you, Chair. This is a presentation that Commissioner Kamkar and I put together. I'd like to especially thank Commissioner Kamkar for a lot of feedback and helping make this accessible, which is. I tend to make things very dense and not very engaging, so definitely a significant improvement. And thank you, Stephen, for presenting this. So next slide, please. So if anybody here is not familiar with it, Missing Middle is a typology of housing that is denser than single family homes, but less dense than high rises. MissingMiddleHousing.org, which actually I believe was produced by Opticus, presents more than eleven types, but I examined eleven types, all of which in their idealized forms are currently prohibited under our objective standards. The ones that I checked were parking density, minimum lot size, minimum lot width, floor area ratio. As a note, these are not the only things that prohibit this type of development. For example, the project at five twenty three Union, that's PLN twenty twenty one dash one fifty, we saw it at the August ninth Sark. It was also prohibited based on. I can add some notes here. The amount of frontage, but with the frontage, the setbacks, front side and rear, the lot coverage percentage, the landscaping percentage and our utility undergrounding ordinance. So there's a lot of things. Next slide, please. This is a list of the eleven types. Some of them are alley loaded, which just means the drive, there's no driveway that goes by it, that you get to it by a driveway that an alley in back. And that's allows you to make a somewhat narrower lot. Next slide, please. Okay, so the way each of these is presented on a slide, so I evaluated each of these types in a particular zoning district. So for example, duplexes are evaluated in our RD zone, which is supposed to support duplexes, for example. Check them against those five factors. I, they are marked either in red if they are non-conforming or black if they are conforming. So if four parking spaces are required, but only two are provided, it's two less than four in red. And if the density does conform, it's less than thirteen in black, for example. Next slide, please. Is, does someone need to mute themselves? Okay, so a couple caveats. I tried to do my homework as best as possible, but again, this does not include everything. Note that as of SB four seven eight, the FAR restrictions here are not enforceable for projects between three and ten units per parcel. Because that provided certain minimums. Also SB nine generally legalized duplexes in R one and R two zones, but those have certain development restrictions on them. And to a certain extent, lot sizes and lot widths aren't as relevant because lots already exist. Next slide, please. So these are the eleven types. This is in the minutes if anyone wants to go through this. So this is an alley loaded side by side duplex. This is just screenshot, the left half is screenshotted from MissingMiddleHousing.org and the evaluations on the right, you can see that it is provides insufficient parking, the lot size is too small and the lot width is too narrow. Next slide, please. You can see this is a front loaded duplex, so it's a wider lot. And it's slightly less dense. Again, not enough parking and the lot is too narrow. Next.
I'm sorry, can you just back up a bit? So can I ask a question?
Sure, yeah, go ahead.
All right, so what are we comparing? Two that are required?
Two that are provided. And four that are required. The left is provided, the left is what is in the project and the right is the standard.
Okay, and the, and the project is what?
The project is an idealized version that's available on MissingMiddleHousing.org. They present, like, this is what an idealized, in this case, stacked alley load duplex looks like. They tend to be about yay wide, that tall, this kind of setback, this many parking spaces. So it's a sort of a sample project.
Okay, and then the four stalls required, how, so how does the column on the right? That's what's required compared to the SB nine ordinances that increase the the units allowed per single, for, for residential?
Great question. This is not taken into account how SB nine works. I did not evaluate any of these as SB nine projects. In part because there are certain restrictions on SB nine projects, like you can't do them next door to each other, I believe. And they have to have ownership requirements. Like if you want to develop a set of parcels, you can't develop a set of parcels. It has to be one that you sign an affidavit that you're going to live in, for example.
Yeah.
So this is sort of generalized.
So we're looking at this kind of more broadly across single family zoning.
Well, specifically here in RD zones. Sorry, go on.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so something I didn't quite mention was at the top, I'm evaluating these in the RD zone. You can see that stacked alley load duplexes are non-conforming across all five dimensions here. Next. Similarly, for a front loaded duplex, you notice that once, if it's front loaded, it's supposed to alley loaded, it's a little bit less dense, so this actually conforms to FAR, but nothing else. Next. And here a triplex evaluated in the RM district, which is neck, the next the next density up and in our description, it is supposed to support triplexes. You can see that the lot size requirements are pretty, pretty significant at this point, as is the FAR, but it's not conforming across any of these dimensions. Next slide. And front loaded, again, it's a little bit less dense than the alley loaded version, but still not conforming. For example, you need a lot size more than twice as large. Next. This is an alley loaded fourplex. Again. This is a much, much higher FAR. The lot size is too small across all five categories. It's non-conforming. Next. And you'll notice that this is R two, our second highest density zoning district. This is a front loaded fourplex. You'll notice that because it's on a somewhat larger lot, it does conform via density and just barely on lot width, but it has too high a far. The lot size is too small and the parking is insufficient, which is a theme here. Next. So this is for a, I want to say number of units, a twelve unit multiplex, a small apartment building. This is in an R three plot. This is our highest density zoning district. See that the, our parking requirements are more than three times what's provided here. It's higher than our highest density available, the lot size is a little bit more than half of what's required and the FAR is obviously too high. Next. And again, small apartment buildings are what's supposed to be buildable in our three zones. If it's front loaded, again, insufficient parking, too dense, lots too small, and the FAR is too much. And next. And lastly, townhouses. We only require two stalls, so this is the one where our parking requirements don't prohibit its construction. But the lot size is too small, the lot width is definitely too small and it's too high in floor area ratio and also inherently has a zero side setback, which we don't provide for anywhere. Next. So this is a summary of all of the eleven types and the five categories, and you can see that none of these types are constructible under our current standards. And these are just our objective standards and these are not all of our objective standards. So you can see that the biggest issue is parking. So I think that's what I had there. Also, you can see the, the list of gradually increasing density in the zone, the gradually, zones of gradually increasing density. Next slide. That's my last slide. Okay. I know I tend to run through these things really quickly, so I'm happy to answer questions. I think Commissioner Kamkar is happy to answer questions.
Yes, thank you. What to suggest is, I assume I still have to open this up to the public hearing. So what I was going to suggest is try and open it to the public hearing and then we can discuss and ask questions at the same time. Might be easier. Okay, thank you. So I'll open it up to the public for any comments, you know, in person or online.
We do have somebody in the online session, Andre Casanova. Actually, we have three people now raising their hand.
Okay.
So I'll start with Andre Casanova. Andre, you are in, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, good evening, Commissioner. This is Andre Casanova. As the city is seeking to obtain objective standard in order to structure this development, it would be nice if we could put some type of a language in for a local hire apprenticeships. I've, I've lived in it, I lived in the town for a while and I have to bypass jobs just like this in order to seek employment much further. It would be nice if we could put some type of language in to help your local community. That's all I got. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Andrea. And just to be clear, you're asking for some type of wording language to encourage local hiring of people for development or for occupation of the properties?
Further developments. Those who building the home should be able to, able to live in the neighborhood. At the moment, we are driving way too far out of our neighborhood to go to, to work on projects just like this. If you could put some type of a language in for local hire and apprenticeships with some type of a living wage, healthcare.
Okay.
This is what I'm, uh, this is what I'm asking.
Okay, appreciate your input. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we have Raja Palella. You'll be allowed to speak.
Hello, can you folks hear me?
Yeah, you're coming soon.
Hi. I appreciate both the commissioners for bringing this up today, Commissioner Kamkar and Commissioner Buckbinder. This is a great presentation. The, the, like, Commissioner Buckbinder covered a lot of points that I was planning to talk as part of the next agenda item, which is the design standards. Frontage, FAR, lot with slots, covered parking requirements, you know, all these things are prohibiting to buy, to actually build like small sized, single family homes. I'm not talking about big stuff, like if we see all these new developments in Dublin, even in Mountain View, Palau to Millpitas, all these are like small buildings, like, you know, three floors, because you have to go vertical when you have less land. And when we try to put these restrictions, like lot widths, frontage affair and things, it, it becomes really tough, even though you designate it as like, you know, this is a R one ten that you can book, go and build ten units in like half an acre or, you know, twenty units and an acre. It is not possible to achieve that density practically because of all these kinds of limits. So I would request you know, the planning commission to make this as part of correcting a lot of, you know, neighborhood plans and. So at this point, I want to bring your attention to the San Thomas area neighborhood plans. San Thomas neighborhood area plan was made like thirty years ago. You know, since then, the number of people living in the community has gone up and people who want to live in the community is also going up. So, uh, you know, one third of the city is being governed by this particular neighborhood plan stuff, which have excessive frontage requirements, lot widths. You know, the backyard requirements and things like that. So I, I want you folks to help out to clean up the San Thomas area neighborhood plan to to make better sense, even, you know, to build an ADU. In some of the lots, most of the lots will not be able to fit a decent sized ADU to accommodate a, a small family with a small kid and things like that. So I would like to request all the commissioners focus to help readjust these requirements in the San Thomas area neighborhood plan to help with those things. Thank you.
Thank you, Roger. I think we have one, one more.
We have, we have two more.
Okay.
We have Jim Sullivan and Scott Reese. Jim Sullivan, you have two minutes.
Good evening, Mister Chair, members of the commission. My name is Jim Sullivan. I've been a resident here for nineteen years. I live in the Santa Moss neighborhood plan and a development that I helped develop. I just want to commend both Commissioners Buckbinder and Kamkar. I think that they spent a lot of time and and it just shows how difficult I think it is. You know, adhering, trying to build innovative housing. SB nine, SB ten, I think are steps in the right direction to try and provide more housing, I mean statewide. And I think that the point that they have so beautifully illustrated is that, you know, some of Campbell's laws or, or standards that they currently have ordinances, what have you, don't allow to be built what the city of Campbell actually should be allowing to be built. So with that, I just wanted to say, you know, thumbs up, like, I'm here to talk about the objective standards, but I'm loving this presentation because I think a lot of this is going to help satisfy the arena obligations citywide, if and when some of the high rises aren't built. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Jim.
And next we have Scott Reese.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. I appreciate the work that's been done on this. I might have missed it, but this looks like it's for new development. My question is, and, and I appreciate that you guys are looking at these standards and looking to redo them, but my question is, is there any sort of data out there that shows how many houses in Campbell would not qualify for some of this and how many do in different regions? Because just looking at that, I, I know there's a lot of houses bigger than five thousands or a lot of lots bigger than five thousand. So I'm just wondering what the data shows us as, you know, where large buildings could fit. Or am I just, or is this all new development? I'm just, I kind of missed that whole part of it. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Scott. I, I think the presentation is to new developments, but I know staff are making notes. And if we have your contact details, your email, then they'll be able to reply on this point. Okay, thank you. Is there any more online? Yeah. There's a gentleman in the audience. Would you like to come up, sir, and? Could you come to the, and just for the record, your name and address, please?
I'm sorry, Joseph Jiminy, Union three hundred, Union Avenue. I don't know if this, I was more concerned about the design. I thought this was going to be residential design meeting. Is, is it okay to address that? Or it's coming? I'll wait.
Okay.
But not this meeting?
This, this meeting says two, two items on the meeting. This was a, a special presentation by a couple of the commissioners on what's known as mission, missing in the middle. We're doing the objective standards review next. Okay. So thank you. Any, any further questions? Okay, at which point I'll close it and open it to the commission. Commissioner Ravelin, kick us off.
I had more of a statement that I wanted to get the input from our, our great presenters. Thank you. Obviously straightforward, if it's new development, our objective standards don't allow any of the presentation material or the the housing types that you've presented. But I just wanted to hear your feedback or input on what I've seen over the past few years as developers or single, you know, landowners developing it would use a PD. And I just wanted to get your input, obviously not ideal. I'm sure staff has some feedback on that too, but wanted to hear vice chair and Commissioner Kamkar's thoughts on, on the PD function. Do you want to go first? Okay, so as I understand it, what we've been doing is using PD zoning as sort of an escape valve. The problem with that is that there's inherent uncertainty to it. You have to go all the way up to city council. It costs an extra, I think, twelve thousand dollars. I could have that number wrong, but I think that's the right order of magnitude. And it doesn't let you, it kind of makes a bit of a mockery of the idea of having made a zoning map because the zoning map doesn't actually reflect what gets built there. It, I managed to look back over the last, I mean, three or four years, and I think every single multifamily, certainly every mixed use development we had was done with PD zoning. And I was actually really surprised at the one on five twenty three Union that it was able to be, that staff was able to do that without using PD zoning by using a density bonus project and a truly astonishing series of waivers and concessions to make that work. Does that answer the question? It does. Great. I, I wanted to hear more detail, so I think you covered it. Thank you. Yeah, did you want anything?
I think you did a perfect job on projects that don't fit the cookie cutter. The, the sites that don't fit the cookie cutter standards, minimum frontage, minimum area, you know, and things like that. That's when PD comes in. And, but that's the whole idea what we're talking about is flexibility. We need flexibility so the innovative Silicon Valley can do their magic. You know, and if we try to keep them in a box, the developers, the architects, the designers, we're defeating the purpose, you know, and that's the, I guess, the gist of what we're trying to say.
Thank you.
So correct me if I'm wrong, but first of all, I like a lot of these designs in terms of doing duplexes and triplexes and whatnot, but I guess, I guess your intention in, in, in providing this is to show where we have a hole in our code, right? I mean, we're, we have these limitations put on it so that these kinds of things can't be built.
Yes, pretty much. For example, the R two, R three zone is for threeplexes, fourplexes, townhomes and small apartment buildings, none of which you can actually, you know, if you take a kind of standardized version of any of those, you can't build those in an R three zone. That's, that's the idea.
Yeah. So I, I guess my question is from looking at some of these, I mean, one of the things that stands out is, you know, half of these are alley are alley based for parking. And it's like, I don't even know if we have any alley based neighborhoods. I mean, I know what an alley based neighborhood is, but I'm not sure we have any alley based neighborhoods in Campbell, so I'm not sure from a practical point of view, making that available really matters very much. You know, because neighborhoods are mostly established. And if you don't have an alley in the neighborhood where you pick up the garbage in the alley and have the driveways in the alley and they're not already there, then it, it to start establishing them in, in a built out city, correct me if I'm wrong, is, is like, well, I, I don't see the point of, you know, having that option if it's pragmatic or not, something that we wouldn't actually use. And then the other thing would, was that I was questioning is you excluded R one. And you know, my, my envision of, of, of some R one things would be, you know, you can put a duplex, you know, in an R one neighborhood. You know, you know, top and bottom, it would fit into an R one neighborhood very nicely. Yeah, in the middle of the neighborhood. Or even more than one. And it's like, well, that should be something we should be able to make sure is available as well, if it's not already going to be in the new objective codes. Anyway.
If I can address the first part of your comments regarding the like the alley neighborhoods and, you know, um, so one of the things we're trying to bring out is that if we have height limitations. Okay, and of course we know land is scarce, so practically lots become smaller, they get subdivided. Because the more units you build, the more it makes sense for developers to do it, okay? So if you have a height of limitations, then you don't have place to park the car underneath. You have to park on the street, you have to park on the open driveway. But if we want to keep our parking standards where they are, then something has to give. If we allow higher length, higher heights, cars can park under the house. You have your green space, you have your, you know, nice empty streets to put your garbage can to put. And then those that can do without a car, then they don't need to use the parking space. They can use it for other purposes, but you know, it's, it's like two sides of a balance. If one goes down, the other one has to go up, you know, to bad, to make a balance. And so that's what I think the presentation is trying to show is that all right now, our code doesn't really work together, you know, it works against each other and makes the final outcome of building house impossible. You either like Commission Bookbinder says, you either get makes the final outcome of building house impossible. You either, like, uh, Commission Bookbinder says, you either get your single families or get your toddler structure and nothing in between, which is not, which is exactly the opposite of what we want. We want flexibility. We want, you know, every lot, you know, has to, every disaster matched a lot, but if you can do it, or you have to spend a lot of money to do it. That's the other thing. You spend a lot of money, you probably can get to, but it, but it doesn't pencil out anymore, you know? So do, I think that's the gist of what we're trying to.
Thank you. That was a really, really great point. Um, so I would note, we do have alleys. If you go across the street from the, um, currently closed library, there's a a development that is alley-loaded also, um. Yes. Um, and there's an area, I don't remember the name of the street, but south of, uh, Campbell Avenue, just in the center of downtown. There's, uh, some alleys that go between, go through the middle of blocks there as well. But the points well taken, like, most of the city is not built with alleys, so it's not exactly relevant. I just put it in there because those were what were available on missingmiddlehousing.org. I would also mention, uh, why did I exclude R one? R one is not, like, single-family homes aren't missing middle. Um, and it I guess I didn't, uh, try to figure out how these would work with SB nine because that seemed a lot more complicated.
Yeah.
And the the idea here was basically to say, our zoning code says you can build a duplex here, can you, for example? I hope that is the question.
Thanks for that presentation. It was very, um, important to highlight this topic. What, are there other, are there cities that are doing this?
You mean this kind of analysis?
No, that are, that are actually changing their zoning to accommodate missing middle.
I'm aware of, actually, the folks from Opticus could probably tell you better than I could. I'm somewhat aware of some attempts to do this in a variety of ways. But, um, I've sent this kind of analysis to other cities, if that helps. Um, but I don't know if anybody's taking me up on it.
I can tell you that San Jose is trying to outlaw single-family homes going forward, you know, because they recognize you're not going to be able to meet the future demand with single-family product. You know, so, um, that's one of the closest ones to us, you know?
Yeah, we definitely have to think differently, you know? We kind of have these, um, zoning rules. They came about. I mean, when, when was the last time the zoning laws were updated for what we're describing here?
So a lot of the standards that we have in the books are ages old. Um, we will do a series of zoning code updates. I think the most recent series is like two thousand four, two thousand six. Uh, comprehensive rounds, but some of these standards go back as far as like the seventies. To be honest, so, I mean, that's part of the reason why we're looking at them, updating them.
That would have been my guess, fifty years old or so, when life looked a lot different than it does now.
Um, if I can, um, chime in, um, I am a civil engineer, so as part of my training, I had to study how you build a city. Traffic transportation and back then, when I was going to school ages ago, the central business district was one side, residential one side, offices, commercial, one side, you know, and traffic was not an issue at the time. So hey, just getting the car and zip, you know, along to where we want to go. And we're not in that position anymore, you know, traffic is a huge issue. Not just the delay, but the pollution and, you know, all the other associated with it. So now mixed use makes sense, you know, so in 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 integrating things that. So back in nineteen seventies was which, when I was going to school, it, our current model worked perfectly. But we're just, you know, not that anymore. And also a disclaimer, uh, Vice, Vice Chair Bookbinder did ninety percent, if not more of the work, you know? I was more of a commenter and more of a, um, just to make sure, get that off my conscience.
I I want to emphasize that this would not be nearly as logical if I hadn't, um, had Commissioner Camp Card to run it by a couple of times to get a ton of suggestions from. Like, you really did help, honest.
So I just, just one more comment. I don't know if anybody, I mean, I looked at the, uh, the website on Missing Middle. And unless I'm mistaken, the, the, the guy that originated this is going to be is is the organization that's going to, that we're hiring to work on our code, right?
Yes, and I did not know that when I wrote this.
So I think that gives us a good shot at at incorporating some changes that would make sense for getting the missing middle in. So I I thought that was a good thing, and I, I'm actually surprised you didn't know that.
Well, like I found out last week, so, yeah.
A- a- any, any other comments?
Uh, the, the missing knowledge. So, so, um, yeah, I I just commend both the two, even Mr. Ten Cent, which I'm sure was more than ten percent, uh, Commissioner Cam Carr. Um, so I I think it's great timing and congratulate you guys on taking initiative and spending extra time uh, on on working on this. And I think it's really great input, you know, especially, especially as we start looking at these objective standards, updating it. Um, and I know we talked yesterday a bit on on the call about it, but, um, yeah, thank you very much on behalf of the commission and and the city for doing that extra work.
Thank you for having us.
So at which point I'll move on to the second item for this evening. Um, so, uh, study session PLN dash twenty twenty-two dash ninety. Study session to provide an overview of the objective standards, standards work, plan, project schedule and community outreach and engagement plan. Um, maybe, uh, I'll, I'll invite, um, the community development director to say a few more words on it, but maybe just as a bit of a, a guide. We tend to have a pre-meeting before the commission meeting, uh, with Director Reese Wood and some of his team, and this time is with the vice chair. Um, I think what the, uh, staff are looking for are type of top-level comments and scoping our exercise rather than necessarily going into the detail of the objective standards. Um, that's going to be, uh, one of the key objectives from, I think it's Opticus, the consultants doing this. I think we're trying to keep it high level and giving them guides on on these key areas. And I know, um, Stephen has got a, a type of agenda for this, this presentation. So, um, Director Reese Wood, did you want to say a few more things around that or not?
Happy to. Robbie Stewart, Community Development Director. Uh, three things, uh, just wanted to hit on and then I'll hand it off staff. So one as a bridge, and the commission was very astute to to link the two, uh, presentations. So if the, uh, the the very sharp presentation by Commissioner Spockbinder and Camp Carr was the diagnosis, say, of a a disease or an issue in Campbell, we're hoping this next item lays out the cure. Uh, so, as they started this, uh, work, we we had coordinated and thought this would be a good event to 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 use this analysis to expose more of the issues we're dealing with and and really the the great timing is, um, this effort, which we're about to talk about, uh, should correct the issue, uh, we're hoping top to bottom. So, so as a bridge, um, a lot of the effort you'll see and we'll talk about, um, what addresses kind of the gaps in missing middle and the the problems with Campbell's existing codes, um, that make folks go into PD zoning or use density bonuses just to develop, uh, multifamily housing. Uh, that was point one. Uh, point two, before I move on, I just want to introduce the team. Of course, you recognize our planning staff. We have senior planner Stephen Rose. We have associate planner Tracy Tam. Uh, we do have the Opticus group with us and, um, uh, they were recently hired. We did a, a new RFP process, uh, recently to go out and get a new consultant firm to help out on objective standards. Uh, we're happy, uh, to hire Opticus and they have a lot of a long track record working on missing middle from base codes, kind of design-based subjective standards. Uh, we think it's a very good fit for Campbell. Uh, so in addition to planning staff, we do have to support them tonight. A couple of folks, uh, from Opticus, you'll see them online. Uh, presenting is Stefan Pellegrini, uh, and also, uh, assisting is Tony Perez, Russell Toller and Roger Foreman. So uh, they're online and in ready to support the presentation. Uh, last but not least, just three things I want to underline, um. They're super important and number one is the importance of this effort. Uh, a couple of years now, state has adopted, uh, Housing Accountability Act requirements that say when you look at projects, you can only apply objective standards to approve or deny your condition in a meaningful way. Uh, the tools in in Campbell's tool belt are very limited because we do not have a lot of objective standards. So for quite some time, we've been a bit exposed and not have, I had that meaningful say over development because the tools are soft, so it's, it's been there for a while, number one. Number two, with our venture into meeting Rena and designation of somewhere between four to six thousand new housing units and new housing types, we have a real immediate need to develop standards to actually implement those, uh, new housing densities of which we have none. So the criticalness of this issue has just been heightened. Uh, number two, just want to underline the speed of the effort. So we we are behind. Um, and again, under our current schedule, the general plan and housing element is targeted for adoption, um, by March of next year. So we do have roughly six months, uh, breakneck speed to try and develop these standards that will act hand in glove with the new general plan designations and implement the zoning with it. So it's a very fast, um, pace and just wanted to underline that. And number three, just want to underline, uh, this won't be an easy process in that, um, Stephen will go over this. One of the reasons the previous effort failed a bit is because it it took sort of a very subtle, elegant approach of saying, hey, objective standards. If something in your design standard says it should look, uh, modern, just say it shall be modern. But but doing that in theory sounds great. In practice, staff and the consultant team ran into numerous issues. So, so given the subjectiveness of Campbell's codes, the work effort, which Stephen and then the Opticus will will lay out is going to have to break apart a a few fundamental, um, structures of the zoning ordinance and have a completely new kind of, kind of ground-up approach to developing design standards. So I just want to underline, um, if it's not, make sure it's not lost in the commission. This isn't a, a light, subtle, elegant effort. It's, it is a sort of reimagining of our design codes. So those three things, the importance of the effort, it's very fast and it's, it it can be a bit radical, um, to make this on, like, we do have to break a few eggs, if if I can leave that with you. So with that, I'll hand it to Stephen and Stefan, uh, who will carry the rest of the presentation. Thanks.
Thanks. And, uh, just in terms of overall meeting structure, so for tonight, just understanding we have, uh, I guess there's two major segments, which I'll cover staff, which is introductions overview of this whole update process. We're gonna stop for planning commission questions and we're gonna have a presentation. It's actually gonna be Tony uh, with, um, Opticus today, who's gonna be giving the presentation on behalf of Opticus. Then we're gonna have a another point where we're gonna stop for planning commission and public comments. So that'd be the opportunity for anybody who's listening online that can provide comments on this update process. Then we're gonna just dive into a little bit of our, uh, community outreach and engagement planning process. So, uh, as many of you are aware, um, over the past, uh, few years, change in state law and primarily the Housing Accountability Act have required the city to change the way it processes housing development applications. Uh, the changes to state law are intended to provide a greater certainty for developers and make it more difficult for the city to deny or reduce the density of housing projects which meet objective standards. So considering that a great deal of the city's policies and guidelines are in fact subjective, the city had previously engaged with Raimi and Associates, uh, with the aim of clarifying existing standards is that should the shall, that that Rob was just mentioning a moment ago, um, taking language such as like ensuring that new projects are compatible with community character uh, and trying to turn this into objective standards, we realized that that was pretty much an impractical approach without creating new standards. So understanding that we needed to create new standards to really implement a lot of our, a lot of our subjective policies and understanding that at the same time, we're going through this general plan and housing element process, we're contemplating all new land uses and densities which were not contemplated at the time, a lot of these area plans are under development and were adopted. We realized it's time that we return back to the city council with a revised scope in mind and 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 we did circulate a new RFP resulting in in the selection of our current design consultant, Opticus. So, um, in in terms of risk recent actions, we actually held a very similar meeting with the city council last Wednesday as a special meeting. Where on this item, the council provided feedback and a couple of key considerations or key aspects of the work plan, uh, including parking, uh, and I'll just tackle these just briefly each. So on parking, they're indicating that although they're interested in exploring parking reductions, they just wanted us to do it in a tactful way. And being considerate of, you know, not to, that that there are other factors in play when we're dealing with parking. Um, in terms of par, open space and landscaping requirements and just generally speaking, the the council wanted us to not not lose sight of like the the little details. There's a lot of things that go into developing a project. And they wanted us to kind of in two ways focus on this. They want to make sure that we don't forget about landscaping or even C three or uh, the the way that you infiltrate, uh, rainwater into product sites, all that kind of little stuff. And they also want to make sure that our project designs didn't end up too cookie cutter as a result of this process. That's one, one major thing we'd heard. Uh, another item, um, in addition to the guiding principles you see outlined in the staff report, they did add a, an additional, uh, I just understand the timeline that we're under the six-month, uh, commit commitment to get the standards adopted. They wanted to add one, which was keep it moving. Uh, in regard to the ad hoc subcommittee, so within staff report, uh, our prior report, we had this discussion about the potential of having a city council uh, based ad hoc committee or a combination of the, of the council and the commission. And, uh, for a variety of reasons, the council expressed concerns about equity and providing equal access information and making sure that we're disseminating information equally to all parties involved at all, all at the same time. That they felt as if it wouldn't make sense for the council, but they did leave it open, open-ended to the planning commission. And then lastly, uh, in terms of community engagement, they wanted to make sure that we're reaching out broadly to the entire community and not not allowing individuals to have a disproportionate, um, impact on our process that may represent a particular neighborhood group. So, uh, in terms of the revised work plan approach, again, in the report, we provide this table just outlining key differences between the initial approach and our revised. So generally speaking, again, before we are going through this process of trying to clarify those vague and subjective policy language and objective standards. Whereas our new approach, we're going to be just creating brand-new standards and we're, that's why it's really important that we reach out broadly to the community, understanding the the significance of this update. Understand we're, we're, we are doing a much broader, uh, approach than we previously had. In in terms of our impact to the area plans, where our prior approach, it sought to keep a lot of the area plan language intact, doing like surgical edits between text and within paragraphs, we're looking at, um, uh, creating a brand-new policy document that's gonna live outside the area plans that we'll reference to for the development of multifamily mixed-use housing development projects. And, uh, the all, the area plans themselves, although they'll remain intact, uh, w- w- and they almost need to because there's three major components of an area plan. Uh, the ones that we have, uh, they they generally have like policy languages, all that, the guiding goal, policy language about what should occur within a certain area of the city. You do have standards which will be superseded by this update. And then there's a, there's a third part of our area plan, which has to do with like furniture improvement, streetscape standards and the like, all that's gonna be remaining intact. So our intention to kind of keep the area plans intact, but where applicable will be superseding them as far as update. Uh, just on two other points, uh, just in terms of densities covered. Uh, before our objective standards updated sought to cover all densities, including single-family. We're staying a lot more laser-focused, targeted on multifamily, so anything that's two or more units really. And going all the way up to our new, uh, newest and highest density range and even accounting for density bonus projects at seventy-five units to acre. And the reason for that is we feel as if that's where the the most significant impact the community is, it's kind of where we're, we're the, we're the most exposed. And where we'll have the greatest, again, impact in terms of like housing unit production and that kind of good stuff. And yeah, just again, as terms of finished product, we are looking at consolidating all of our standards in a new policy document as opposed to surgically trying to edit seven different area plans and all of our sections of our code. Uh, again, uh, I I I think I captured a few of these points. This is gonna be a phased update. Again, we're prioritizing multifamily mixed use while still recognizing the need to address single-family as part of a future update phase. We are seeking to replace and supersede our existing standards by creating new standards. And in some cases, we're gonna be creating brand-new zoning districts, which will be implemented by this new policy document. Such as our seventy-five units to acre, there's not even a comparable zoning district today. There's nothing to update. It's just creating brand-new from scratch. And then, uh, as an associated effort, what we're gonna be trying to do is, um, limiting the city's reliance on plan development. It's been, I I think we characterized it before a few different ways. I I see it as a crutch. Cities relied on it because a lot of our current standards don't work. So we've had to implement projects through plan development zoning to just make them work at a lot of these development, uh, a lot, a lot, a lot of these lower-density, um, housing types, such as the missing middle, which, um, was covered in the prior presentation. Again, just in terms of what what is gonna be the impact of our area plans, again, we really, it's, it's almost surgical in that regard. We're keeping the goals and policies intact and development standards. We're only really referencing the new standards for multifamily mixed-use development. The rest of it, as it pertains to, say, commercial. The rest of it, as it pertains to say, commercial or standalone commercial projects, it's all going to remain in place. And streetscape and improvement standards are also going to be retained. So I think I'd heard a comment from a member of the public in our prior item, just about where will these standards apply and what will be the impact citywide? This is kind of a map that kind of highlights those properties, which would be really subject to the new residential design standards once once adopted. So this includes not just the housing opportunity sites, but any site that has a residential density, say over eight units of the acre, going all the way up to our new highest density range of seventy five units acre. So that's our first phase targeted update. And just here on the screen. So also as part of the update, the city will need to revisit the city's parking standards, which are fundamental to the design and feasibility resident residential development projects, as you know. Recognizing a comprehensive update could be a work plan in of itself. The focus will be on a practical review of site constraints and the parking standards afforded to density bonus projects and potential parking reduction strategies, which have been identified as part of the draft housing element, such as unbundling parking from residential units and permit parking programs to as potential reduction strategies. In addition to looking at reducing the total number of parking spaces required, we're also going to be looking at dimensions. So on a lot of our projects, the parking standards are say nine by twenty for residential space. Where commercial standards lesser amount, we might be looking at other options like compact or other things as far as this process as well. Just in terms of overall project schedule, as prior previously mentioned, we have three major planning work plan efforts underway at the same time. We've got the general plan, as you know, the the housing element, but now also as part of this update process, we're looking the the residential design standards, all the a final adoption date in March of next year. Now, on the way to get there, we're right now, we're in phase one, where we're doing our kickoff meetings, a lot of community outreach, education and engagement. In in our second phase, which is going to be I guess, as you say, September, October timeframe, we're looking at preparation and review of even an administrative draft of the of the of the standards is going to be, it's not going to be everything, but it's going to be a lot of the key highlights and that we're looking at targeting. As well as the the city council separately is going to be working on taking our housing opportunity sites map, which is about six thousand five hundred units or so right now, and looking at ways of refining that list. And as part of that update process, we plan on providing the council test fits, showing what will these densities mean for particular sites. And we have identified five sites right now, but we will have up to ten, which will be updating in in cycles or series as part of this update process. So it's to help us help visualize what these standards mean, how they translate, say densities that are under consideration as a as a real world consideration to our community. And we'll help identify potential compatibility concerns or issues with the the densities which we do have under consideration. It's part of the housing element process, but also how these standards might also help resolve or remedy a lot of the concerns about compatibility that we might have, making this the scarier numbers like seventy five units acre a little bit more approachable. And then, yes, in terms of starting next year, we're going to be working on finalizing and then again, adopting it in March. So just in terms of guiding principles, I'm not going to go over all the subpoints, but just big picture, we're looking at keeping this process simple by having it again, all these standards consolidated in a single document. Keeping it focused, there might be interest in doing as we go through this process, we're identifying all sets, all types of code and issues that with with our current standards, we are trying to again stay stay focused on multifamily mixed use development. We also like to make sure this process is as engaging as it possibly can. I encourage everyone in the audience to that height, anybody who's heard about this update to kind of push out updates as much as you can to your respective communities. Help us spread the word. But also, we're also going to be focusing on making this very visual, trying to get away from a lot of the key term, like the the planning jargon, like FAR, lot coverage. Those are terms that although they're they're important to what we do, they don't necessarily resonate well with the general public and the community. So we're trying to say, hey, these are types of projects we'd like. This is the architecture. This is design, trying to keep it high level. And then again, that last point, which would have been raised by the council, the fourth guiding principles to keep it moving is we've got to do this all in a very tight timeline. So with that, that ends, I guess you could say, the first part of our presentation tonight, and we can stop for questions before going over a presentation with Opticus.
Thank you, Stephen. That's very good. Open it up to the commission.
And so just to be clear, this isn't just multifamily housing. This is multifamily housing and mixed use housing that we're developing standards for.
Correct.
Thank you.
Do you do you have an expectation that some of what comes out of this would apply to the single family?
Yeah. So I imagine a lot of the feedback, which we get through a lot of our public engagement processes will carry over. But just it won't be addressed immediately here. Now, we're definitely be keeping I guess you could say a list of things and comments which we've received and other things which we recognize that we need to update as part of this process and that will be addressed as a later phase.
Well, it's great to start with the most impactful approach here. And I think this is very exciting.
I have a question about the where your your impact area plans. So you're going to retain the area plan, but you're actually not going to. There's only portions of the area plan that you'll continue to make use of. And I guess my question is, how do you do that? If you keep the area plan that has all this other stuff, you know, subjective and we really don't want to look at. We only want to look at things like streetscape and and certain certain kind of guidance. So how do you keep the area plan and still not use the whole area plan?
Great question. I guess you could say our approach will be anytime you you're trying to say a project would just say subject to the Housing Accountability Act, anytime you're doing a multifamily or mixed use project, you're going to point out, reference out to the new objective design standards, the residential design standards booklet. And where we need to, we might have references back to the area plan, saying, say, for the development, streetscape standards and the like, refer back. The intent of retaining the area plans, the neighborhood plans and by and large intact, maintaining all those goals and policies and all that subjective language, they still play a role in our decision making process. They help inform the way that we make condition projects, but also they help us inform the way we make might go about creating new standards in the future that applies more specifically to that sub area of the community. But as far as that 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 approach, I would say, again, if you're doing a multifamily mixed use project, we'll probably have a single sentence, something at the beginning, some overarching comment saying for these types of projects, please refer out to this new policy document, which provides all of the standards which will help govern how that's built. And include even within it's within that document, almost like a self contained set of policies and standards. Even definitions will be self contained within the new residential design, because you could say toolkit development standards document.
I have.
I guess just a follow on question to that. Guess I'm thinking that on the one hand, you said we want to, we want to maintain some of the the kind of area plan. We want to maintain them intact and then use them in our decision making in the future. But I've heard from members of the community from those areas that they're asking for significant changes based on the fact that the area plans were, you know, produced in the nineties, let's say. So how do you reconcile those two things?
So I guess there's a few things that are going on. And maybe first to characterize the way that we're going to approach the area plans from the like right here and now, we're going to be going over them to determine kind of like a base starting point. So that we're going to be reviewing them, helping form, say, a starting point again. As you know, and as kind of the missing metal exercise and any other exercise we conduct, a lot of the existing standards within these area plans are inoperative. So we are going to identify those types of issues as we go through the area plans, even where we might have an objective standard, it might might preclude the types of development and projects which we want to promote and provide for. So that's where the new standards are going to really come into play. We're going to be looking at the area plans and their existing standards as kind of a starting point and then building and building on that. So again, we there might be some good things in these area plans as we as we look them over. And maybe those are good ideas which could apply, not just in that one certain area of the city, but these are just generally good practices. Why does say a certain standard only, why is it only limited to a certain area? Maybe it needs to apply citywide. And so the way that we go about it is we're going to be looking at these for inspiration, but definitely take it to the next level. And a lot of these area plans, again, they're 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 some of them are older documents, nineties, eighties adopted, some of them more recent, say, like the Winchester Boulevard Master Plan. But none of them contemplate the densities that were now that are now under consideration for the housing element. So I know as part of that minimally, we're going to need to be creating new standards to address those types of housing development.
Thank you, Stephen.
I realize probably the answer to this is it takes too much time, but I guess my take on this would be, I don't know how many area plans we have, three or four. But why not rewrite the area plans, just include the portions that you can use, trim them down as part of redoing this all and say, we want to keep a Santa Mas plan that has these elements that are allowed. You know, like streetscape and and then get rid of everything else.
It's a good, good, good question. And there's a few reasons why we're taking the approach we are. And I won't use Santa Moss off the bat. I'll say use Winchester. So the Winchester Boulevard Master Plan allows for both residential and commercial development. So the standards which are on the books that could facilitate, say, commercial building. What we want and need to retain intact in the event somebody comes forward to say a standalone commercial activity. So if we were to just go through it and just wholesale delete out major sections and just say, they're superseded by this new policy document, that could have additional ramifications and consequences, which we don't really have time to address as part of this update process. And then again, I would go back to my prior comment, a lot of it, even the subjective policy language and standards and goals, that type of language, which you'd be typically inclined to just go say, well, this is no longer applicable anymore. You can't enforce it. It does help inform us as a community, what are kind of our our goals, the vision for a certain neighborhood or area is, we might need to revisit those at a later date in time. But they help us again, define an area and define how it might be distinct from other areas of the city. So that when we create standards like the subjective design standard, the residential design standard policy document, maybe it's an exception, like there's a general rule that says, you know, all buildings will have a floor ratio, I'm just making this up, of forty five percent. Exception, property subject to sub area one of the Winchester Boulevard Master Plan will be allowed up to fifty percent. But that why that fifty percent exists and why it's specific to that sub area? We wouldn't want to clog up our whole residential design standards policy document with that. The area plan can help inform why we might have a certain provision that way. And help help inform the future decision makers for why it might be changed.
Pleasure. Do you have a question?
I just had one more. Is there a website similar to the one we have for the housing element or a place to point people who are interested or want to give feedback? Do we have that up? Will we have that up?
We do. We actually have a dedicated residential design standards page. So if you visit our website, just type in hopefully the 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 search engine optimization SEO is is correct. If you type it in residential design standards, you should pull it up.
All right, I have one more question. I wrote a couple of things down based on what I saw either here. I assume that the optical presentation is going to get into form based zoning stuff, right? I don't have to ask about that right now.
That's correct. And you're a little bit more in depth on the approach.
Okay. But there was another thing about, I guess it came in front of the council about having a ad hoc subcommittee. And that the council says maybe, but we don't want any council members. Maybe just planning commissioners, which I don't quite understand. But I don't know if if there's really serious consideration about an ad hoc subcommittee, but I thought I'd ask.
We, it was a lot of Robbie's community director, it was a lot of deliberation at the council. It was all recommendation the council consider again because of the pace and the the need for a lot of major decisions in a short period of time. For the reasons Stephen mentioned, they declined at the end of that, they said, you know, if the commission was still interested, of course, they could entertain it. I'd say the rule from staff for seconds, probably less effective being just a planning commission subcommittee would report to you and then you would report to the council. I think our ideal is to have a body that would sort of advise both bodies and be a bridge between the commission, council and staff. Of course, at any time, the commission can appoint an ad hoc subcommittee on virtually anything. So it's your discretion. I think at this point, staff would see less value, though, if you asked us on on just a planning commission subcommittee versus a combined subcommittee.
Thank you for that. I watched the council meeting and saw exactly what you're talking about. You know, I agree without council members, it's not going to be as effective. But I think it would be better than not having an ad hoc committee. So I would be interested in us having an ad hoc subcommittee and talking about these items. Thank you.
So just to me inform that is perhaps at the very end. We got two pauses. First pause here, Opticos presents pause. And then at the end, if the commission wants to come back to that decision, might be a good time to discuss it.
Okay, thank you. Can can we move on to the presentation, my Opticus, please? So Tony, you can go ahead and share.
Okay, yeah. Well, thank you for having us tonight. Chair and planning commission members and members of the community. I'm Tony Perez of Opticus Design, representing Opticus tonight. Unfortunately, Stefan Pellegrini, the principal on this project, is available tonight. With me are my colleagues, Russell Toller and Roger Foreman. Give me a second and I'm going to share my screen here. Here we go. Share screen. Share. Let's see this. Do you see the, do you see that? The first slide, is that coming across? Okay. Can everyone hear me? Okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. So yeah, we're very excited to be starting this process with the city and and providing objective standards for the Steve Campbell. Tonight, we want to go through three, three elements here in the in the presentation. Now, we want to introduce ourselves to you and our experience and and how we're approaching this. And then also just how we go about applying objective standards and particularly to Campbell. So the team that's working on this project for you are these four on the screen here. Stefan is the one that isn't available tonight. But he is leading it as the principal, and then I'm the project manager on a day to day, and then Russell and Roger are are working on the project with us. Just so you know, Stefan and I have been doing codes like this for probably over twenty years, maybe, maybe, I don't know if you we counted maybe more than twenty, but definitely twenty. So we have a lot of experience doing this and we very much enjoy it. And that's really a rarity. There, you know, there's zoning code work and then there's work like this where you get to really envision a community and envision what a community can build and put that into standards. And so that's what we try to do in our work. What what we're bringing to Campbell, you see there on the left, there this comprehensive toolkit of objective design standards. This is, this is something we developed over the past, I'd say, four or five years as as objective standards, quote unquote. But there's been fifteen, twenty years behind it, leading to that becoming objective standards as required by the state recently. And so we're going to walk you through tonight, this toolkit that we prepared that gives communities the ability to select from a menu, a catalog of standards that we worked on over the years and perfected over time. And then you get to select them, apply them to what you need, and then we customize them for you. So this approach started most recently in the county Marin. We were, we were hired in Marin in twenty nineteen. And we took the approach there to the county and then ten of the towns and cities there. And so far, I'd say half of those cities are in the process of adopting or making those standards their own. In addition, we are working right now in Santa Barbara, South Salito on its own, Mountain View, Pittsburgh, Aranda and other places across the country. The the idea of the of the of the objective standards is rooted in in the the idea that there are physical and in, in the, in the idea that there are physical environments that make a city. And they go from low intensity to high intensity. And we have studied enough cities in California to have a range of these environments in this toolkit ready to apply. And sometimes we might have to add some new ones, but we believe that we have the environments that, that Campbell needs to execute its, its, its density per the general plan, the current one you're working on. And the idea is that this palette of zoning districts you see here, there are eight of them. They go from low intensity, two-story zones up to four-story zones and transition to some main street environments, lower intensity, main street environments, to higher intensity neighborhoods, and then higher intensity, main street environments. So we have a whole palette here and the, the toolkit flows from this. All the standards are key to one of these eight environments. Or let's say we had to make a ninth or tenth for Campbell, then we would, we would do that. But the standards are key to these environments. And it's really important to understand that the, the zoning standards, unlike regular conventional zoning, which doesn't really know what it's making at the end of the day. And as many of the speakers have already said, you need to have workarounds. This form-based approach with these eight different environments, these eight different zoning districts, it's aimed at a particular set of outcomes. And you just reverse engineer those outcomes that you want as desired outcomes into standards. So the standards, we've taken a lot of time over the years, as I mentioned, to really figure out how to express this information on pages that satisfies city attorneys, city clerks, and then readers and users and developers. So that it's clear, it's, it's, it's not confusing. It's, it's easy to use, although there's, there's a lot of information here. Not everybody uses everything, but if, everything you need to develop all kinds of outcomes is here. And you can see on the left-hand side, there's, there's a lot of size information, there's height, there's step back information, there's building setbacks, encroachments, parking location, parking amount, streetscape, a lot of information is on these pages. And then supporting the zoning district standards are supplemental standards. And there are, there's a menu of supplemental standards that you can choose. And some cities choose to apply building type standards, some do not. We, we recently did a code like this in, in San Rafael, in the downtown and the adjacent neighborhoods. And they chose not to apply building type standards to that code for a variety of reasons. But we, we think that in Campbell, there are reasons to apply this at least somewhere, maybe not everywhere. But again, it's a supplemental standard that can be added on. Another topic that is in supplemental standards that many cities choose, which, which we don't normally regulate, but because of the nature of objective standards and the lack of discretionary review and that kind of process, cities find themselves faced with a question of, wow, if we don't regulate something about architecture, we would, we won't have any say in it. So we need to regulate something at least. And so this is a set of standards that, that we worked on, that regulate the essential elements of six styles. And again, some cities choose to use this, some cities choose to use three of the six styles. For example, Corte Madera adopted their objective standards and used the architectural style standards as guidelines and not standards. So there's more, more than one way to go. As, as Stephen mentioned earlier, a part of the process that informs the standards, there are two, two big things. Our experience in doing this and applying our experience to Campbell. And, and then the second part is working with people like you, local developers, local real estate people, the community, and hearing more input and refining that information. And then the third way is to actually test the standards, test the inputs that we're getting from the community, from everybody and saying, okay, this is what you're, you're asking for. Let's see what it does. Let's see how, you know, maybe you might want to make some refinements to this. So these are models from some of the objective standards work we've done where we could make the models look very beautiful and architectural and have roofs and shadows and trees and windows and people. But a lot of clients ask for just these simple massing models to not get into all that architecture at this point. But to just understand what are the standards yielding? Is it, is it the level of intensity that the general plan is expecting? Is it too much? Is it not enough? Where do we need to make some changes in the building massing? All those kinds of things are revealed through this type of testing. So the, the scope of services that, that we are working on for Campbell is basically in three phases several. We're in the first one, we, we are, we were calling it the toolkit customization, the startup. And, and again, instead of coming here and trying to learn how to write zoning standards and, and, you know, what not to do and all that kind of thing. We're bringing our toolkit of, of these eight zoning districts and all the supplemental standards and this catalog that we've, we've worked with staff to, to go through and familiarize. And then you'll select that content as it makes sense for Campbell and then we'll customize it in an initial draft and administrative draft, then a final draft in phase three. Through the process, we, we will work closely with you. We've already been working very closely with staff in, in just the past two months. We've had a lot of meetings, a lot of get to know what's happening in Campbell, get to explain how the toolkit works, what it, what, what it provides, all those kinds of things. We've had a lot of great interactions so far. And this is just one example of the kinds of information that we're preparing behind the scenes or with you publicly to, to explain what the standards can do, what they, what they, how they might regulate something differently than you are now, all those kinds of things. And again, it's our understanding that if we're at a meeting, then you would like us to facilitate it. But if not, we're glad to attend and participate as an attendee. So it's up to you, but, but we're prepared to facilitate. We're very accustomed to doing that. You know, we love, this is actually a picture from some work in Memphis, Tennessee that we're doing currently with some comprehensive planning work and some upcoming zoning code work. And we, we just love working with people all over the country. The timeline is, as Rob said, is very fast. I don't need to go through that anymore. It's very compressed and we, we've got our work cut out to do it. A quick, just a very quick overview of, of why the, why the toolkit makes sense for you? Why is it relevant to, to Campbell? What went into it? So as I mentioned, we, we prepared it for Marin County. Marin County said, you know, the state has, has come through with this requirement for objective standards. And we have all these towns and cities in the unincorporated area. And if, if we pool our money, what could we do? And so they pulled their money together as one client and, and we prepared this toolkit for them. And with the understanding that then they would take that toolkit and then go through a public process and let the, the public comment on that now that, now that it existed. But they realized that if they did it reverse and said, let's go out and try to prepare this all individually, we're all, we're all going to come up short, we're all going to take too much time and we're not going to get as far as we could if, if, if we did it together. So they did it together. We prepared this toolkit and now they're in different stages of customizing it. What went into it is a pretty robust existing additions analysis. I, I think we analyzed, I don't know, close to eight hundred individual parcels and, and understood their dimensions and what could fit, what couldn't fit. And we produced this, this documentation of just the physical character that makes up all these places. And that helped us explain to the, to the eleven jurisdictions, what they shared and what made them unique. That helped us make those eight zoning districts, eight physical environments. We realized that some places only had two of those environments, some places had four, some had three, maybe one had five, but nobody had all eight. So, so this catalog was, was, was created to accommodate all of them. And so that's how we can, we can go to another jurisdiction like Campbell and say, you know, you might not need all eight, but we, we know the three or four or five that probably will suit you. And maybe we'll need to make a ninth, maybe we'll need to make a tenth, but we have a huge starting point to work from. That's, that's, that's based in, in, in reality and based in, in real places. As opposed to a model code that, that's an ordinance that, you know, you have to adapt to yourself and change the names and everything in there. It doesn't necessarily have the right standards in there. So that it's a huge difference from that kind of approach. And then lastly here, you know, we, we were able through that process and, and as a, through a process we'll go through here to coordinate the context in the community. See at the top there, edge suburban and then more urban or, or the word core is substituted for urban with the different types of places in the community. And you see there are neighborhoods and corridors and centers and Campbell has all three of those, right? Neighborhoods, corridors and centers. We're able to coordinate all that with those environments and at the bottom, those zones, we're able to coordinate them and, and be able to, to track it. And somebody can understand, oh, wow, we can see that the main street medium is coordinated to this, 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 this category in the middle here. And it's, it's implementing a core type of context. All that is, is, is trackable. And for the people that are interested in that, there's, there's like, show your, our math. And then last slide here, this has all resulted in a twelve-chapter catalog that we call the toolkit. You can call it a catalog. Some attorneys rather call it a catalog, but that's fine. But the, the twelve chapters are organized into the, as you can see here, everything from a preamble that explains it and explains how it's put together and what it, what it is meant to do to the introduction and applicability that you find in zoning codes, to the zone standards themselves, and then all kinds of standards for uses. And then the supplemental standards that I was talking about. And then lastly, administration and procedures, reviewing procedures for how to, how to process these projects and the definitions. There are a lot of new terms and phrases that a form-based code like this uses that are not in your current municipal code. But again, because this exists and is relevant to so many different places, we can, we can help you select the, the content you want and then focus on customization. I'll stop there and open for questions. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Tony. That was a, that was a very interesting presentation. What I suggest is we'll take questions from the commission and open it up to the public hearing and maybe take a five-minute break after that. So over to, over to commissioners. I mean, I don't have a question prepared. Commissioners.
Well, you know, there's a, there's lots of little stuff in there that we can see, but it, it looks like a comprehensive thing and a comprehensive template, I guess I would call it. I guess my question is that, and when I look at, when I look at Campbell and our parcel map, we have this little, I don't know what you would call it. It's like we have a little checkered board that's kind of spread over here and over there and over here. There's a, a couple of big parcels and cool big parcels in the, in the west and cool big parcels in the north and then lots of smaller parcels, some of them on corridors, where there are already established developments. And so you're just adding, you know, another piece where we can, it's either, because we're, we're built out, we, we have, we're already developed and, and any of the, the vast majority of these parcels will be redevelopment. And so I guess my question is, is this typical of what you've experienced with all these cities that you do? And, and, and are we basically saying we're going to look at a, a particular parcel? And then we're just going to have a different way of getting that coded so we can have a certain kind of development that's more appealing and, and then also more appealing to the developer? Is that what we're talking about here? Is, is there any sense to that question at all?
Is, is that a question for me or Stephen?
It's, it's to somebody in the group.
Okay. Yeah. So I, I can take a, a crack at that. Yeah. Yes, Commissioner. The, the intent is to implement the general plan densities. So we, we are obligated to provide standards that implement the maximum zoning envelope that is allowed by your general plan and turn that into zoning standards. And so that's different for different areas of the city. And so the, the challenge is to work with the maximum intended intensity set by the, the new general plan and look at where those densities are physically and then match standards that, that work with the context, what's there or what is intended to be there. So in some cases, the, the area is intended to change based on the general plan. And so we look at what the general plan envisions and match the standards to make, to make that happen.
Okay. Thank you.
So two questions. One, is that catalog that you showed us available anywhere? I'm very curious to page through that.
Yes, we provided it to city staff and they have a copy that they've been looking at as we've been getting oriented to this project.
Thank you. And secondly, just to orient myself, do form-based codes cover, for example, parking standards?
Yes. Yes. Just, just a quick word about what form-based codes cover. There is, I, I think there, there is confusion about what form-based codes cover because many of the early first wave form-based codes only, only dealt with certain form and architecture intentionally. And, and all these other things were getting regulated by the existing zoning. But a, a new form-based code regulates as much or as little as you want. But everything needs to be, everything that's being regulated needs to be regulated tomorrow. And it's whether the form-based code regulates it or your existing code regulates it.
Thank you. That answers my question.
Any, any other questions? Okay. I've, I've got a, I've got a few, if I may. So, so Tony, picking up on a, a couple of, I think, comments or questions coming from the, the town council. As I understand it, we're moving from use to a type of form-based approach and type of offering up template designs for buildings. How do we avoid, I, I think the concern, the cookie cutter was one of them. How do we allow creativity in architectural design? And as I understand it from your presentation, you have a type of, you know, a palette of maybe designs which would be sensitive to the community, I could see being, you know, upgraded design for Campbell. But how would you see it allowing new designs, more contemporary designs being introduced over time? So, so, you know, rather than being too specific in how a building design, how do you allow that creativity? How do you like, allow that sensitivity to where the building's being located? And also how do we allow for updates in architectural style over time?
Yeah. Great questions. There, there are several there. Let me, let me take them one at a time here. Let's see. So the, the issue of, of cookie cutter and, and flexibility, they, they sort of go hand in hand. What we have tried to do is in certain standards, let's take the front setback standard. We use a, a technique called the facade zone. And you can consider it as a minimum to maximum front setback. And what that facade zone says is that in, in every, in every environment, say downtown is one environment, right? And a low intensity neighborhood mostly houses is another type of physical environment, right? Where those, where the front facade of the building in those two different places is located has a lot to do with how that environment feels and how, how good it feels and, and how, how, how positive it feels as a, as a streetscape, right? Well, so that you don't get the relentlessness of the same thing over and over. Well, so that you don't get the relentlessness of the same thing over and over. Uh we use that technique that and and it's different. From what you hear in a lot of form-based codes called the build-to-line. A build-to-line is you have to put your building here for the reason I just said, to create that streetscape. To make sure the building is in the right place to create that public realm that 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 needs to be created. But the problem with that build-to-line is it's it's just half of the question, the other half is. Well, if I want to be creative, how far could some of my building be pulled back from that build-to-line and still create that environment? Without without detracting from it, and that's what that facade zone, for example, provides, it provides an architect developer the ability. To to modulate the front of the building as they want, as long as they meet the standards and so. Uh that is a huge way to avoid relentlessness in in any of the of the zones that these these standards um uh regulate. The the other on architecture, um you know, again, the the standards are. Prescriptive about the box and where the meaning the 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 overall form of building. And and how it's masked and and how an architect arranges that facade is up to them. And whether or not you apply architectural style standards is up to you. You can, you can choose to not apply architectural style standards as as Corin Madera did. And just apply them as guidelines and there are there are wrinkles to that, how that how how that works, but. Um you could choose not to apply architectural style at all, there's there are a lot of form-based codes that don't have architectural style in them. But the reason that we're even talking about them here is simply because of the lack of discretionary uh review. In um in the uh Housing Accountability Act process. So, uh and then the other thing about the architectures that uh we. We have developed this palette of architectural styles, I think we have seven now. And uh everything from craftsmen to um meta Spanishman training or Spanish colonial revival to. Art deco to Tudor to um contemporary mid-century modern and uh. We we have tried very hard to um to only regulate the essential characteristics. Of that make each of the styles different from another and and if you put them together, you'd say, oh, that is. Tudor, that is craftsman, that you could recognize it without overregulating it, you know, I I think. Uh you you're just going to have to look at that content and 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 be your own judge on that and say, I believe that or I don't believe it, but that's the intent. Of how those standards were prepared, they look very detailed because everything's drawn, but if you look at it closer, not everything is regulated that's drawn. I guess it's the best way to say it, so. Uh but yeah, that's that's something that we need to work through the process and get feedback and hear what the community Campbell wants.
Okay, thank you, I think that was a very uh very helpful answer, thank you. Um uh and a a second uh question, again, uh came up was. Um the importance of um uh open space landscaping. Uh and I guess the general Campbell community, like the Campbell feel. Um yeah, how how do you make that objective? Um and I'm thinking, we're we're talking about form designs of buildings. To to, how how do you have a landscape or an open space merging into? These buildings so they don't appear separate, because you know, a lot of where it works really well is where they type of merge in, so I'm I'm wondering how you're thinking about that.
Yeah, great question, so there is an element, one of the supplemental standards is called um frontage. Specific to frontages and um it it's often called frontage types in in a in a form-based code. And that is a place where um the area between the front facade or side street facade and the property line are regulated. Not the facade itself, but the elements that project from the facade, let's say porches or stoops or door yards. Things that transition from the building itself to the public realm sidewalk, those are regulated closely depending on the kind of environment again. What works, you know, in your downtown, isn't going to work in in the low intensity, you know, house neighborhood. Um and so those choices are coordinated and then they're provided and you say, there are five ways to do. That in your on the main street and there are six or seven ways to do it in a low intensity neighborhood, here they are, but they're different. And you could provide standards for those elements along with landscape standards that that um are the. Carpet, if you will, underneath those kinds of elements between the sidewalk and the building facade. So that that is, that is a short answer for how uh how we we would deal with it.
Okay, thank you, and if the fellow commissioners will indulge me, I've got one more. Um so so on the parking um side of it. Um how how are you thinking about um the type of movement to? E-mobility, making things more pedestrian-friendly. Um accessible and and how does that reflect on some of the objective standards that you you're coming up with, especially around the parking?
Yeah, so we we are not proposing to um to reconfigure any rights of way. Or um or impose any transportation uh plans, the the scope of of our work is. Is within the the outside of the rights of way. Uh the the property, um the private property or public property, the the lots. And and what goes on to those lots and how many cars for each building and all that, that that's to be worked out, that's always a super local. Set of decisions about how much parking works and and again, it depends on where. Um so uh I don't have an answer on that because we're still learning about camel and what what's going to work here and what isn't. Um but yeah, we're we're not reconfiguring rights of way.
Okay, this, thank you, question.
Uh two questions, um one, we have some pretty significant regulations around uh tree planting and tree replacement and so on. Um you know, our logo, Mercy logo is a tree with the Orchard City, et cetera, so is that something that? You can fold into those standards to encourage. To replicate the intent of our existing tree regulations.
Yeah, most likely, we would just point to that and and refer that existing uh well-supported content. As opposed to try and recast it, um but we can work with staff to understand what what is what's needed here.
Thank you, and secondly, um. Does your toolkit include um? In denser, more city center areas, does it include options for things like roof decks and balconies?
Yes, yeah, there's actually, great question, there's actually a a section in. In that supplemental portion of the of the toolkit, there's a chapter five, general standards to all. And uh there are all kinds of things in there, like, you know, the layout of parking lots and things like that. Uh but there's one section on roof decks and and we have been perfecting it in the city of Santa Barbara recently, so. Uh and and I, when I say that, I I I don't mean to bring on all the stylistic. Baggage that you might think about with Santa Barbara, because they're very style-conscious and and very, very specific, but more. That they have some very specific issues that help form that content and refine it from what we had. Um in terms of the area access, how tall, all that kind of stuff, uh so we, yeah, we have content for that.
And uh thank you, and one more, one of the things that comes up a lot when we talk to people from various area plans. Is concerns about privacy, um people are very uh concerned with sightlines into their yards and so forth, so. Do we have some way of making that more objective and at least giving people an idea of these are the, you know. The privacy guarantees that we will uphold here so that we don't wind up with people who feel like they've been um taken for a ride.
Yeah, thanks for the question, Commissioner, I, you know, um. There there are a couple of ways to go about it, one is obviously height next to shorter buildings and and without knowing. More than we currently do, I really couldn't answer, you know, more specifically on that subject, but you try to avoid. Really tall buildings next to short buildings so that you don't get that peering into the into their yards. But on buildings that are, you know, near the same size or a little little bit bigger, maybe one story different. It 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 still is an issue and so um in that chapter five, there's also content. About privacy alongside yards and and so we have standards that say. If you want to orient building uh windows that are facing the side yard, then they have to be a certain distance back, otherwise you have to. Angle them to not have a direct sightline across um and and techniques like that, they're they're a little more. Uh complex than that, but but yeah, there's a section on on standards for that kind of thing.
Thank you.
By the way, Commissioner, I wanted, I wanted to uh commend you on your study, uh your missing middle study, uh this this team does a lot of studies across the country. Missing middle analyses like like you did and uh yeah, you did a great job and uh thank you for visiting our website um and all that information, I. I also wanted to clarify that there was a question about whether or not um those missing mill types would 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 only work with alleys. And they they totally work without alleys, yeah, I think I think the content that was pulled maybe focused on that, but but those. Missing middle types work with and without alleys.
Thank you, that that means a lot.
Okay. I got a better question than I had before, um the in in our agenda, there's a mention of these test fit sites. There are five listed and I I guess there's potentially going to be more, I guess I would like an explanation a little bit more about. What you try to accomplish with putting these uh these test fit sites together. Um and um. Uh the, you know, well, just just what what we will get from that in general in terms of uh. Uh to to move move this process along.
Commissioner, are you, are you asking um why the the five sites that were chosen have been?
Not the right, not why the five sites should shows, but what the what you accomplished with.
Okay.
Sites in general.
Great, okay, yes, yes, um maybe it wasn't visible and uh maybe visible on the screens that you have, but I had a slide. Uh explain the test fit process and what we're looking for there is to test the inputs that we've been given. To make the first initial draft, we're going to make three drafts, initial and administrative and a final. And so along the way, on each of those drafts, we will be given input by the community and everyone here. And we're going to take that input, distill it and turn it into standards and then we're going to test it along the way and say. Here is what that input is 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 generating, here is what is happening on this site. And here's what's happening on this site and do you want to change some of your assumptions or maybe you want to? Increase this set, this step back, maybe you want to decrease the step back, maybe you want to allow one more story than you were previously considering. Maybe you want to uh decrease the parking ratio in this situation, maybe you want to increase the the open. Yard at at grade level because of, you know, something else and all the, all those kinds of questions um are. Able to be answered when you generate those test fits because they reveal what the standards are are designed to do. And it ultimately helps you get generate the the next version and keep going.
But but I I I'm that, whatever you particularly come up with on that site. That's not necessarily to say that's the only choice, right? I mean. Is that like, well, this is what you get because of the particular way we're setting up the code or is it like? This is one version of what could happen.
Well, yeah, we, it's one version, but I want to say. That there's a difference between what a form-based code will do and what you're probably used to. With with the conventional zoning approach, which is, you know, largely unknown and and needs to be. Generated through a lot of review and meetings, the the form-based code is going to be more predictable in its outcomes. And and what we're going to, what we're going to show is, yes, one way, but it's not one of a thousand, it might be one of twenty, one of fifteen. As opposed to one of a thousand.
Yeah, it sounds you had one thing to that, we have a. An opportunity here, we're doing the housing element review and and. The council expressed interest in doing some refinements uh with your support recommendations in the fall to the numbers. In tandem with the zoning ordinance subjective standards update, so we actually see an opportunity here. When we do the test fits, especially on housing opportunity sites, to inform that process. Both one, if you're designing a site, just say for seventy-five units per acre, that's all theory. And you do a test fit with a zoning ordinance, you can get a little bit more informed on what that looks like in reality and that could inform this, is it seventy-five units, is it sixty? It it would it would more inform what we're planning for during the housing process too. Um and commissioners might be aware of this, uh HCD is really critical that. Uh not only you zone and you calculate numbers on theoretically what you can develop on properties, but you should, in reality, what actually will be built there. So again, as a a value added to this process, as these test fits happen. You could test out, again, uh using these standards on these housing sites, what actually could be developed, so. There's going to be an iterativeness between the residential design standards, objective standards and the housing element, but we think it. Will create a good synergy in informing both of the processes.
Thank you, so it's essentially like a prototyping proof of concept type of thing.
Exactly.
Okay, so just a real quick question, Rob, um in picking the first five sites, were. Was it factored in about the likelihood of those sites being developed, is that? The 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 criteria or what?
So those five sites which we selected kind of represent a range of different types of development, which we're contemplating as part of the, say, the housing element update. Granted, work, those sites are all housing opportunity sites also, but keep in mind, this update affects all. Properties in the city which are residential, say eight units or greater per acre. So we're going to be looking at other sites that are not necessarily housing opportunity sites to just help highlight that point. That these are not just only the housing sites, but yeah, I mean, we're trying to provide a range of. Of housing types and choices to show, illustrate all these various scenarios and and kind of how they, how these standards would also address. Things like residential adjacencies where they may occur or where they might not.
Okay.
Uh just question for uh logistics, uh the order of things is we have questions, then public comment, then feedback?
Uh yes, so we'll do the.
Okay.
Open it up to the public hearing, we'll take a um a five minute break. After that, and then we can have the uh the discussion and and feedback. Um uh uh and maybe I'll I'll look to the staff to make sure that we cover the key items um that uh that we should be covering. So without open the um public hearing. Um maybe start with uh. Joseph, you want to kick kick us off?
Luckily, luckily, I'm Joseph Jimmiani, sorry, three hundred Union Avenue, by the way, thanks for doing this and being proactive, um. Because my wife and I, uh we travel quite a bit, we love to travel Europe and the United States mostly. And um what I'm worried about is I'm seeing what I call an epidemic of. Buildings that tend to look alike now, and I don't want that to happen to Campbell, but we're seeing a lot of boxy buildings. You know, kind of stick construction all over the country, actually, it's kind of scary, but um. Why, I'm going to change a little bit because what Mr. Perez said, he says, it could either be a. A s- uh standard or a, um what was that, a guide, a guidance, I think he said. I'm worried if we go by guidelines, I mean, if we go by guidelines, I'm worried that these developers are going to build something fast. You know, and cheap, right, to make as much money as possible. If you give them the option of what to, a guide, guidance, I don't think they're going to follow it, and that really makes me worried, I think we're going to have to stick to standards. And uh I I spent time on the Winchester Boulevard Plan and um. Mr. Weeks, I guess, what is it, William Henry Weeks, I guess, we took in consideration, you know, I mean, he was a fantastic architect. And uh made beautiful buildings in the United States. And we 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 wanted a plan that kind of fits into that, can you imagine a six-story concrete, you know, boxy? Modern modernist building next to one of Weeks' project would look horrendous, so I want you to be careful, whatever we do here. Don't mess up the Winchester plan too much, if you have to go, you know, if it says three stories, four stories, I don't mind. But we wanted to respect kind of his style, you know, Spanish, what do you want to, whatever you want to call it. Uh Spanish Revival Mediterranean, whatever you want to call it, we had a specific architecture, at least near his site. And be very careful on Campbell Avenue too, because we spent a lot of money on Winchester and Campbell, undergrounding utilities, you have a, oh. Oh boy, so your do- your design guidelines say, given the unique character of downtown. New developments shall incorporate the traditional architectural style articulation. articulation, the details that reflect the city's history. I think that's very beautiful. That's on page sixteen. You know, so there's a lot of work done in this stuff. Let's not go too far away from it. Thank you.
No, some very, very good points on that. Thank you, Joseph. Do we have anybody in person?
Yes, we have three people. So first is Amy Cody. Amy.
Hi, thank you for tonight's discussion, and I appreciate um you know, someone bringing up the issue of privacy and sightlines earlier, because there really is a difference. You know, based on what height of existing residences are that are next to some of these um um upzone properties. Uh but anyway, my question is about um with form-based code, if if especially with larger structures, is there an opportunity to um require lead certifications or some like minimum um environmental element levels like solar panels or green roof or storm and gray water recapture? Uh even with smaller, you know, buildings, you know, passive lighting, overhangs. Are there are there um opportunities with the residential design standards to incorporate some environmental um requirements? Would that be a supplemental? Has this been done anywhere that you've worked in in which you worked?
Uh thank you for that, Amy. I personally, I hope so, but I'll look to staff because this may be dependent on the legis legislation, legislation and what we can and cannot do.
If you like, churching, I can respond.
Yes, please.
As a separate effort, uh we'll be starting actually soon next month on updates to our building codes, our reach codes and electrical vehicle charging codes. Um and that should come, we're required to get that done actually by the end of the year. There's a three-year cycle update. And that will be coming um to the council and likely commission in the September, October timeframe. So that that work effort will address the 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 areas the the speaker was uh asking about.
Thank you, Director Eastwood. Um hopefully that answers your question, Amy.
Uh next is Rajah Palola.
Hi, Rajah. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear your folks. Can your folks hear me?
Yep, loud and clear.
Okay, um first of all, thanks a ton uh for going through this. Lot of appreciation to Director Eastwood and Senior Planner Rose. Uh you know, never seen things move so fast uh in the city of Campbell in the last few years I have been looking at. Coming to this particular meeting stuff from the previous meeting uh to address Commissioner Ostrowski's comment. Bilbota is a great uh example of accommodating missing middle, especially in the new developments that there are a lot of new developments going on. The area around Great Mall, uh you know, lots of townhomes coexist along with huge apartment complexes. You know, um public parks, like small parks, but still public parks and open terrace plans uh compensate for lack of, you know, backyard. So folks go to the third floor, like they have like terraces. So they go to terrace to get some air light and whatnot, right? Because of the lack of backyards. Sunny Valley is also accommodating a lot of these new designs. You know, I also encourage the commissioners to visit the development across the street from Bilbota City Hall. You know, that that's a development that has a lot of live work buildings. They have like shops in the first floor and the top two floors start to live, like people like hairdressers, tax preparers, you know, boutique software companies, etc., are there. Um so those are great examples. And coming to objective standards, you know, uh please don't restrict elevations to like, you know, contemporary or two-door or something. Please keep it open for folks who wants to build like contemporary or modern anything. Uh you know, we can do this always. Allow modern designs within the framework of objective standards, like, you know, break in sight lines, like no straight building kind of thing. But you know, just give or break the strike lines in the elevations. Also, I I I, you know, for the the lots sizes are going to become small. A lot of small buildings are going to uh come. So for that, I encourage, uh you know, I I want to encourage the commission to look into the possibility of allowing, you know, open terrace, like the top floor will be like an open terrace um for access to air light, you know, people can have a barbecue on the top of the minutes. Like if you go to cities like Hong Kong, Delhi, you know, you see a lot of these buildings, like people go to the terrace to have like a birthday party or something like that, you know, and it's a lot of fun. The other thing, San Thomas Neighborhood Plan again, covers one-third of the city. One-third of the city cannot be called a neighborhood plan. San Thomas Plan.
Conclude your time. We will need to move to the next person. Thank you.
Uh Rajah, thank you, Mr. Clark. Rajah, could you truly uh last going to a conclusion? I I think you're just going to mention San Thomas if you could get over the key point.
Yes.
Mission.
Yes, a quick thing. A lot of big lots, ten thousand, fifteen thousand, twenty thousand square foot lots, that's a lot of wasted open space. Um right now, the plan restricts the maximum building height to two and a half floors, you know, with all the new constructions. We need at least three floors. So fixing that as part of the San Thomas Plan will be great. Um setbacks are also a big restriction in the San Thomas Plan fixing, you know, there are bigger setbacks than the rest of the city. So fixing those like the surgical fixes that Stephen is suggesting uh is required. Yeah, that's all. That's can be.
Appreciate that.
Uh next is Jim Sullivan. Jim, you'll have two minutes.
Uh thank you very much. Um Jim Sullivan again, and uh I want to commend Tony Perez for doing a great job. After listening to Stefano last week and then him this week, uh he really went into a great detail um uh with it. And obviously, as a Campbell resident and as a developer, that that has done a lot of sites, um both, you know, kind of uh lower density housing all the way up to, you know, eighty, eighty-five units to the to the acre, higher density housing. I'll say that obviously Campbell needs to, you know, you have three or four new density ranges, right? And so you have to do objective standards for those. And I think one of the key things, as pointed out again by Commissioner uh Bookbinder and Cam Car, some of the standards that you have for that missing middle, right, it's a perfect time to revise that. I think Opticos is a great, you know, company to help uh city staff and and the politicians kind of do that. I do want to just bring up that I, although I think it's important to have objective standards, uh I I and it was mentioned before that flexibility is the key. And I agree that you don't want cookie cutter type developments. I've seen other cities where everything is designed for like small lot, single-family detached homes, right? And the first floor can be this size, the second floor is a certain percentage. And what happens is they're built throughout a city and they look the same. I mean, even if they're re-elevated, I mean, it kind of looks the same. And Campbell kind of wants to stay away from that, I think, because it is a unique city. And I'm just going to disagree one time with with uh with my friend Stephen Rose on the PD, right, is still an invaluable tool for a developer that that doesn't mind going to the city council, right? And is trying to do something that's even, I'm going to say, greater than what the objective standards would allow to be built. So um I just throw that out there again, in case somebody wants to do something, you know, better, bigger, afford them that opportunity. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim.
Next is Bruce Bowen. Bruce?
Uh yeah, hi. Um yeah, I just actually the previous speaker, I think.
Hey, Bruce, I think you you cut off.
Oh, did I?
There you go, Bruce.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate a little bit what the previous uh speaker was saying about the PD. So I remember when Steve Piaszeki, who was the planning director at the time, came through and rezoned a number of uh properties as PD. And his concept was is that it allowed a more creative solution on properties that um that were a little bit unique. And I think it it's something that you need to have in your toolbag, because there are properties that don't fit into these cut, into these cookie cutter regulations. And so I I think that it's really important to to keep that. I'd also like to say that uh so we have a number of properties on Gilman Avenue that we're working with a very creative architect on. And we're talking about doing uh harking back to the history of Campbell and doing a nineteen-ten uh cannery architectural style. You know, we'd like to have that ability to be creative and do something that's a little bit outside of the box. If we do it well, I think it will be a real asset uh to the city of Campbell. So I just would be careful with creating too many confining requirements and use them more as uh as a guideline and and not as a hard regulation. Thank you.
So thank you, Bruce. I think that's a I I think there's a very good comment and along with Jim's, right, it's it's probably something we should consider for the toolbox. I think that brings us to the end of our public comments. So thank you. Um I'll close the public session. It's just gone nine o'clock. What I suggest is we take a a five-minute bio recess, if that works for everybody. Um and reconvene uh about seven minutes past. Thank you. Um, okay, shall we reconvene? Um ladies and gentlemen. So I believe, are we going to present on the public outreach and then do the discussion? Okay, so we'll do one more section and we'll do the discussion and that'll be it.
Yeah, absolutely. So um so just in terms of trying to get our messaging out and our part of our community engagement strategy, we've branded this effort as residential design standards. Our last go-around, we called this thing objective standards. On occasion, you'll hear me slip myself because I had a year in that process. But um we think that that's an approach will be better understood by our general public. We are also doing of outreach via a variety of means, including just, you know, general social media outlook outreach channels like LinkedIn, Facebook, Twitter. We also have a dedicated public website and we're maintaining an email interest list. There's an opt in. So if you haven't already, please do so. We have recently released the city's community design survey, which is asking for people's feedback for architectural styles at a variety of scales of building building skills. Everything from say two stories all the way up to seven. We are also holding a number of community meetings and developers workshops, roundtables. We are also facilitating on demand appointments and we reached out to all of the neighborhood associations offering to meet them onsite. Kind of going out into the neighborhoods and give them a rundown of what this update process is and why it's important to participate. We also recently just on Sunday did a farmer's market pop up booth. This is another just example of how we're trying to do additional outreach and throughout this whole process, we're going to be doing meetings, the planning commission and the city council to try to get the word out. So on the screen here, this is an illustrative example of one of our email blasts. Hopefully, everybody in the planning commission has been receiving these, but we we have it broken down into a few key components. We're doing an email blast, sometimes usually a few days in advance of the meeting. But also courtesy email reminder, the night of the meeting with that link to the Zoom meeting. So it's making it very accessible to the public to get into. Within the within the emails, we're also indicating that, you know, you can get access directly to the meeting materials. You can also take our community design survey and then towards the end of these emails, we're also just highlighting a couple upcoming events and providing links to them. Such as our two workshops, our public and our developers workshops, which are going to be later this week. In terms of our community design survey, again, this kind of sneak preview, if you haven't already taken it yourselves. This is our our approach to conducting just general feedback on architectural styles and preferences in the city. We do have examples of local Campbell buildings, I think, in each of the categories, but we're also providing a more contemporary, more traditional, and even a Spanish option in each grouping, just to try to solicit as broad of community feedback as possible of what what we'd like to see built and developed in our community. And not to miss an opportunity, these are just a couple of our upcoming meetings. And so I'm using this as an advertising pitch. So even tomorrow, we have our community workshop. That's going to be at six P M. And we have a developers roundtable meeting on the twenty sixth. That's at three P M. And all all members of public are welcome to attend both meetings. And yeah, this is just quick fun photos from our farmer's markets. We actually had an activity which was modeled really in large part based on our community survey, which we just asked members of public to place a red pin on the the building architectural design they'd like the best and black pin on the on the housing unit development types that they liked the least. We're going to be tallying those results and we'll be including that at a future exercise and update. And without that includes staff's presentation. So and and I believe that there was one additional discussion point for the for the planning commission consideration was the the formation of an ad hoc committee.
Thank you, Stephen. Great, great presentation. So who would like to lead this?
I do have some thoughts, but I'd like to ask a clarifying question or maybe two. One, has the the city's architectural consultant been engaged in this process? And or will they be?
Generally not. So if you if we would be, we are hiring Opticos to fulfill that function as part of this update process.
Okay, so they would be the architectural consultant as well as the standard developer like. I I was thinking, is there a way to audit the and and I'll compliment Opticos in a moment, but is there a way to audit the process from a subject matter expertise level?
I would generally say we are encouraging all type, like we're encouraging architects, developers, brokers, everybody to participate in this process. And there's going to be a robust auditing, I guess you could say component of this. We want to make sure that the standards which we're working on developing A reflect community expectations. It's kind of the public workshop side. Then are also pragmatic, realistic, practical. And that's why we're engaging the developer community as well as architects and members of their teams. A lot of them need a lot of development all the time. And on their teams, they have a variety of opinions, architecture, some of these developers which we have in mind, we're inviting these meetings have already have idea, already have architectural approaches for their sites, which is going to be seeing how these standards might help them form.
Sure. I I think I heard some of the public mention they had architects engaged and and have you know, their own vivid imagination or designs on their parcels or their their partner, you know, their developers parcels. The the second part of the question. You know, I heard the conversation multiple times, myself included about P D. But what I what I do see here is a robust tool and I compliment Opticos and staff for for seeing this as a you know, a tool that can take Campbell for the next ten, twenty, thirty years. Let's say it's perfect. It's approved next spring. Everybody loves it. What? Without going then to P D to make any edit, what is the ability to make adjustments? So it's perfect, but we couldn't use that material because it didn't fit into that objective model. And I don't know what that is. It's I'm just thinking hypothetically.
A great question. I mean, with the implementation of any new plan or program, there needs to be a kind of a feedback loop, right? Where we we implement it, we see what's working, what's not working, and we revisit it. That said, I guess on two points, one immediately following the adoption of the residential design standards toolkit document in March, we're going to be identifying a list of priorities such as pursuing, say, the single family residential designation. We've got a lot of work ahead of us. So that I I'd say we might allow the standards to sit for a period of time. See how they play out. We're going to see a lot of new housing development roll out with the with the general plan and housing on an update process. We'll take all that feedback into account and then at some point in time in the future, we'll revisit those standards. I mean, there's going to be endless opportunity for refinement. I mean, honestly, the whole, there's been a major paradigm shift in the whole way of review processes go. We should be focusing on objective on these standards and development and refinement of them on a routine basis as opposed to the project level basis where we're spending a lot inordinate amount of time reviewing individual projects. We should be again refocusing on these standards from time to time. The other point I wanted to make was on the P D. We had a comment about that. It's not our intention to eliminate the P D. It's the I guess you'd say the talking point from our staff report is to reduce the city's reliance on it. Particularly as as I was kind of framing it as a crutch. As again, maybe one of those later phases of our update process, we might be exploring opportunities to make that P D process function as a way of providing as a an opportunity for developers who want to do something really unique or special. Where it makes sense that they could go through a legislative act, something that's not subject to, say, the Housing Accountability Act of their own accord, where they could propose something distinct and different from our general rule of standard, almost creating their own unique planned unit development standards for a site by which their project would then be governed. That's again, that's future phases. We we're focusing on the critical, the here and now, the our priority items. So that's something that we're going to be tabling for the immediate term.
Thank you. And back to my original question of of edits, would it have to go back to planning commission and then to city council for ratification? Or like a like amendment or or you can make edits on the fly as staff or that was that wasn't clear to me.
Yeah, it's a general speaking, these are going to be adopted by they're they're an extension of a zoning ordinance by so by all right, they should probably be by ordinance which requires council action. That's it. It could be possibly parts of it, which could be administratively edited by staff or items which we could maybe bring back by resolution of planning commission. I haven't really worked out that part of it yet. I could see it being both ways. But but generally speaking, as an extension of zoning ordinance and development of of standards, it would be an ordinance which would require council action. So the planning commission council for edits.
Thank you. I'll move more to my comment. I appreciate the context. So great work, Stephen and and planning staff. I think this is the right direction. And then by extension, thank you, Opticos for bringing this tool to our city. And I think it has a lot of potential. What what I'm not entirely clear on is, you know, it sounds like there are eight options, but those options have endless permutations within them. But I I look forward to seeing it. Maybe I can also look at a copy. I think Vice Chair Bookbinder had asked to see some templates or some initial passes. If they were sent to me, I didn't look at them, sorry. But to my fellow commissioners, I think this is the right path. It makes sense. I don't have a lot of visibility on the nuance of it, but it seems to be like providing the right menu to enable us to, you know, make the right selection down the road and and let city council, you know, ratify it so then we can move forward. What chair, what other input should we be providing? Like, how how do we? How can I fine tune my comments that give us impact or action? Okay, I I like the idea. That's I don't know if there was a question in there, but I like the the future of it. And although my time is sunsetting, I think it has potential. So good luck.
Thank you. No, I think that's you know, is anything here that is missing? You think is going the wrong way? Does it type of make sense? I know, you know, it's sometimes more difficult to visualize this until to your point and that vice chairs, can we actually see some examples? And I know we've got this type of prototyping of some areas, so.
The the framework is perfect. Now, what happens in that framework, I won't be here to see, but maybe I'll watch from the public, but I can't say it's gonna be perfect on the first pass. That's why I was asking about the ability to change. What if one of these says no pink homes? But someone really wants a pink home. Like, what's the ability to objectively allow that? So a bad example, but just something to think about.
Thank you.
I had a question. For staff, did you reach out specifically to affordable housing developers? I imagine they have specific needs.
We have. So we do have a developers roundtable meeting come Friday and that includes both outreach to affordable market rate, housing developers and market rate.
Excellent. Thank you.
So you know, this is obviously, you know, this is all the whole foreign base zoning thing is like I'm is ignorant is I could possibly be on this. So I don't really know. I must I'm going to entrust the fact that the city and the and the council that hired Opticos is we're going in the right direction. I'm assuming the 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 community development department is has a consensus of of supporting this. I I don't know enough to know whether whether Opticos is just, you know, technique is the right technique, but I look forward to seeing the process go ahead. And my only other comment is about calling it residential design standards. True, you had, you know, it's like the only thing I I know from is like, you're going to have a lot of residents thinking of it, you know, who are living in single family housing. Think that they're going to be worried about what's coming. And so you know, it's just maybe you should be calling it residential design standards for multi unit housing or something like that as a head as a header. Just just so that, because I think you're going to get a lot of people who are going to go. Oh, you know, they're going to be confused and and you're not going to cover single family housing in this route. So just as a clarification, because you're going to be outreaching the community. Somehow make that really clear that we're doing everything but, you know, single family housing and that maybe maybe you should be adding a subhead some sort. But it's just my 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 marketing take on it. So that's all I have.
Thank you.
I I think the 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 plan is great and the team did a nice job going over the the overview here. I think it's it's beneficial, I think, to the community and and the city to have hired a consultant that has experience working with so many different cities across the country clearly. And for us here to be able to leverage all of that expertise that was clearly articulated in the presentation. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I like to echo the sentiment of my fellow commissioners. We are working with a great consultant. There are some of the videos I've watched from their past work, you know, tells me we're in good hands. And as Stephen said, this is going to be an iterative process, you know, so once they come up with those guidelines, it's not like they're casting skull stone. When things don't work out, they they can change, you know, so that we get it just right and that's just, you know, that's just the way things work, you know, and so I'm very actually optimistic as to how things will turn out. And I think we look forward to a better future. You know, with this process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to be clear, this is time for our general comments. Cool. Just as a note, Mr. Casanova called in earlier and may be interested in A B two zero one one, which would which has a certain labor standards for redeveloping commercial areas as residential. And that's currently in the final stages of going through the legislature. Going forward, I I think it's a good idea for staff to be able to propose changes without going through the sort of extra loop of asking the planning commission to propose them and then staff brings them back, which we currently do, because this is going to be an iterative process. And I think Opticos is on the same page with this, but I did want to mention that I in general, I think missing middle type should be constructable without variances or waivers. I am curious as to how we're going to manage trash enclosures and and such for lots with little frontage so that we don't have fourteen units trying to put twenty eight trash cans on, you know, ten feet of frontage. And just in general, I think we should make sure not to make existing structures illegal without good reason. And I think everybody here already knows that I have a lot of thoughts about parking. Like one of the things that might be useful to do, especially in downtown areas, is to allow substitution. In addition to unbundling, allow substitution for some amount of bike or car share parking at at some ratio. And those are the notes that I have at this point. I'm really looking forward to seeing the the catalog that Opticos made.
Yeah, I I echo my fellow commissioners standard commissioners comments here, you know, is is really trust the consultants who have got a great reputation and trust the process and it isn't fixed in stone. It's iterative and can be improved as we go along. You know, maybe just highlight some of the comments I noted from the public hearing. I think one gentleman in the audience mentioned his preference to standards versus guidance to to potentially avoid any developer shortcuts on there. I type of get that. And I think that's worth thinking about and especially building on the comments of Stephen. Where, you know, if a developer, if we had standards as opposed to guidance, but the developer felt particularly strongly, they wanted to do some novel development, as long as we had the ability to still use the P D tool for that, I think that's a good point. And I think that was expressed by a couple of a couple of people calling in and building on vice chair's comments about roof roof decks. I assume that would include like roof gardens, greening. Now, are we thinking about in the form about putting roof gardens and greening the top? I think I sent you an article actually about that.
You didn't. So yeah, rooftop gardens for mixed use spaces, rooftop decks for restaurants and such, or for for purely residential use like rooftop shared space or private space. It could be a garden, could be just a place to go, you know, laying a deck chair.
So those were really my comments on there. So thank you. I think we had one item which was I think we had one item which was to consider, um, a subcommittee. Um, and a Commissioner, uh, Kamkar was interested in that. Um, I guess the question is, if we were to do that, well, how would we see that fitting in the process and helping the process as opposed to delaying the process? And I'm not saying it would, but given the tight timeline that we have, because I was thinking, wow, wow, we're not going to hear anything until November, but actually November's only a couple of months away, right? Um, so I, I don't know whether the fellow commissioners have thoughts on this and staff have thoughts on this.
There's two things I'd add. One is, um, I think staff already developed a couple of touchpoints that we could develop. One, two, I'm looking at our city attorney to verify. I think Plan Commission Ad Hoc Subcommittee would not be a Brown Act body. So there'd be less need for noticing a meeting, could be more flexible in just meeting with staff and getting, giving feedback as opposed to a council slash commission subcommittee. So it does provide a bit more flexibility in just scheduling meetings and providing input. So, so we, we could, we can make it work, but that is one advantage of just having the Plan Commission Ad Hoc Committee. It, it were a bit more flexible in setting meetings up.
Okay.
A- a- and if I may just briefly add, so the idea behind the ad hoc committees where they're going to follow our community workshop series, who would have a meeting with the public, would have a meeting with the developers, and then we'd kind of have a, I will also describe as a, like a direction-setting meeting with the, um, the subcommittee, which would be providing us feedback, saying, okay, this is what we heard. This is how we plan making that actionable or how we're going to be advancing this project based on the feedback from the public and from that, from the developers. That said, one of the things that came out of the, um, I, I think is a comment or consideration I've made at the council meeting is that if we don't end up having, uh, a subcommittee, we might do an additional check-in meeting, let's say, with the council. I mean, particularly come next year, we're going to be having at least two new council members. So we might need to have a, an initial immediate check-in, say, come January, which we would kind of substitute that meeting series four, because we're only really targeting three of these. So instead, we'd do another, say, council meeting just to help onboard those new council members that are coming in so that they're not suddenly surprised come February, March, where we're telling them, hey, we have these new standards, go ahead and adopt them. We'd have a meeting, uh, instead during the, in that kind of timeframe.
Okay. Um, in, in the same spirit, I guess, um, I'd like to ask, um, Mr. Perez, is there, do you feel you have enough direction from us and from city councils? Is there anything that we haven't covered or that is unclear, um, as you guys like jump into this?
Uh, thank you. Uh, thank you, Commissioner, for the question. Uh, you provided great, um, feedback tonight and, um, uh, a lot of, uh, just in asking a lot of questions has provided us, uh, a little more to think about and to understand what, what priorities are, are on the commission's mind right now. So yeah, we have, we have enough direction to, to move forward, uh, especially working closely with staff over the past month and a half. Um, and just getting up to speed on, on everything that you all are doing. So yeah, I know this has been really helpful for us. Thank you very much.
Excellent. Thanks, Vice Chair, for, yeah, I, I missed that. So, so on this subcommittee thing, do we just want to look for potential volunteers from the commission for this committee? If it's needed or if there's particular items that we would like to, um, have a subcommittee discuss?
So, Commissioner Kamka. Thank you. So, you know, the reason I said I'm interested is just to gauge, see if anybody else is also interested, because you can have a subcommittee of one. You can have at least two, you know, maybe three, so.
You get agreement easier.
So, um, uh, you know, that's the, that's the reason. If there is interest from at least one other, then it's, it's worth pursuing. But if there's not, then we don't want to wait. You, you're interested? Okay. So we got at least two.
Well, can I, can I suggest the possible alternative? I mean, I, when I read about the subcommittee and the council wasn't interested in having a council member on, it's like I was less supportive of that concept. And if it's, this is basically to get updates and a little feedback. I mean, we meet twice a month with the Planning Commission. I, I'm not quite sure why we can't set aside a half an hour at every Planning Commission meeting or at least one of the Planning Commission meetings a month to review this particular thing so that we all get an update, uh, not just a couple of people. It would seem to be, you could cover a lot in 30 or 45 minutes on what's been happening and do that a regular standard basis for the next six months.
I like that idea.
We could do that. Um, it's about a staff report writing, that aside. So one thing we used at my prior employer, we had a major Stanford general plan update, is you could just have it, we have a standing item, uh, almost on the commission for a report out on status. And you could, we can almost be, so the public knows what you're talking about. It's not, it's not ad hoc. They're, they're noticed that you're discussing the topic. And if it's just report outs on outreach, we could have that. If it's, uh, report outs on, hey, here's the formation of design standards and take 20 minutes, provide us feedback. Uh, we could do that too. So, so, uh, we, we could make that work to summarize.
So, so what I'm hearing here is, eh, this could be just a, an annex to the normal document package that goes out, which could be an update report to the commission or to, to the public as well. Um, do you think it's, that's, I know you guys have got a load of work on. You feel that's something that's manageable?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, don't expect novels from us every two weeks. So if it's, uh, no report, it's no report. If it's, um, a light update, it's a light update. If we need to fill the space on getting some more constructive feedback, we do that too.
Yeah, I, I would just, you know, like a two-page executive summary kind of thing of, uh, a, a, a review of what's been, you know, if you, if we had a community meetings, the developer meetings, what came out of it in a page or two. That's all. That's all I'd be looking for.
And if we have it as an agenda item, um, for the commission, if we have questions, we can bring it up at that point. If we don't have any questions, we just can move on.
Yeah, I mean, that's the advantage of having it, uh, as a notice on your agenda, that the public knows you're talking about it. So you have free rein to ask staff questions.
Okay.
Well, are we, are we okay with that approach? Sorry, run that by me one more time. I'm not sure I quite understand.
So, um, with the bi-weekly packet, um, there would be a type of exec summary coming from staff on the development progress, um, on this objective standard development.
Would there be room for us to, like, to give brief feedback on that kind of thing?
Yeah, again, it would depend on what we're presenting to you and where it's at in the process. I know that's a highly qualified answer, but depending on the, what's before you, the answer is yes.
That sounds excellent.
Okay, um, you know, I felt a ad hoc committee, subcommittee meeting, it would allow a little bit more room for discussion, a little bit more room for creativity. We already have the Planning Commission format, you know, all these things can come out in that too. Like the, for example, the missing middle presentation, I don't think that would have come out in a regular planning session meeting, even if you added 30 minutes or to every, everyone or every other one, you know? So I think, uh, subcommittee, ad hoc committee has its own advantages and, um, uh, you know, and also disadvantages in it. It takes more time, you know?
If I can provide a thought, and I don't know if anyone was on the commission at the time, but many years ago, there were training sessions offered or, I wouldn't call them committees, but we met on an, on an agenda, without an agenda, we met just to discuss training topics. I don't, obviously, the attorney will have some thoughts on what can and can't be said in those sessions, but maybe there, that is like your subcommittee is a, a one-off or a quarterly check-in. But again, I don't know what is allowed from a Brown Act perspective. Can the commission meet for an update off non-agendized?
It's less than three.
No, yeah, the, anything that the, uh, that a quorum of the commission or more, uh, meets on would have to be subject to an agenda and limited to discussions of items on the agenda.
So how would the subcommittee work? Just as long as it's not four people? It could be three?
Correct. You could have up to three people, uh, as an ad hoc committee. Uh, and, uh, you would not need to notice meetings of the subcommittee because it's not an ongoing, uh, uh, matter of.
Understood. So, so how, how does work? We've got two volunteers with Vice Chair and Commissioner Kamkar. We don't necessarily have a subject for discussion at the moment or work on it, but if we needed to call upon that committee, we could call upon you guys.
Yeah, to report back.
And it could act as like, a bit like a SARC report.
Yeah, we could do, like, present, provide some kind of, like, short research or suggestions or something like that, um, as we did with the missing middle thing.
Okay. How, how does that work for people?
Sorry, uh, just like you call on the director to make a report, you know, you could do, you could call on the subcommittee is, you know, what do you guys have? You know, what's your update?
Yeah, your special task force.
Special task.
Special what?
Green Beret.
Is that acceptable to staff?
We, we can make it work. Okay, just two caveats. I guess I wouldn't ask staff to provide biological updates and subcom- you know, just careful of the, the Christmas tree effect where you put too many ordinance on, it might fall over. Um, but, but, but that being said, um, you know, I always appreciate the support of commissioners willing to step up and roll up their sleeves. The subcommittee does provide more flexibility so you're not burning time in a commission meeting. So if there's folks who want to get more involved, we're open to that, um, number one. Uh, number two, I, I just frame the, the principles of mine, uh, just the subcommittee members, keep it moving, keep it fast. We'll, it, the intent would be to, to keep things framed within the work plan itself. So just a, a sort of word of advice. And then, um, yeah, we, it would, we, we could be flex- it, it would provide flexibility for us to meet with subcommittee members. And then to follow up last, you could just have and, uh, a report out by the subcommittee, again, on your commission meetings and staff, of course, could help support that also.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I fully get it, right? We don't want to slow this down with a heavy workload already. And I don't think there's any particular items, but maybe if we were, you know, the team, including the staff, felt there was a particular item that we could spend more time on outside of the commission, we have the two, two volunteers, um, but being cognizant of your comments on there.
So we'd be kind of available, but not scheduled at this point?
Correct.
Okay.
If that's it, um, any, any other comments, questions?
I think you addressed it, but just for clarity, I think there were some comments from, um, the public that mentioned not changing area plans just for the sake of changing them. I think I heard Winchester and Campbell acknowledged, and I would agree. I, if hard work has been done in past years, if it fits the, the future model of form-based and objective, why, why not keep it? Don't just delete it because it was from olden, olden days. But yeah, I think there's value in keeping the history and the character of our corridors and our city overall.
Just one more thing. There was somebody on, uh, online at some point who was talking about the Santa Mas area and not being able to put in ADUs. I must have misunderstood what he was saying. And it seems to me that that's not true, right? That, uh, ADUs can work in, uh, the Santa Mas area based on SP9 now, especially, or the ADU.
That's correct.
That's correct. I was just wondering if maybe should be, somebody be talking to that person to tell them that they're, that, that's, that's totally available to do in, in the Santa Mas area.
Yeah, I, I think there may be. I, the gentleman I, I think was, um, I, I think at a previous meeting, he referenced the type of ADU guideline document that staff have been produced. So may, maybe that was a, you know, it, it was mis-said. I think he probably understands it, but good point. Not one of us second guessing, of course. Um, okay, well, thank you to, um, Tony and his team. Um, great report, really appreciate it, really appreciate the time and all of the staff's effort on this. So we're definitely looking forward to seeing the, um, the output and the, uh, the, the next steps on it. Do we have, uh, a Community Development Director's Report, um, tonight?
No, I, just a quick note, we're finishing up the EIR and draft general plan. We do have multiple work plans and we anticipate publishing those documents probably in the next two to three weeks. So not, we might have an air commission meeting ahead of that. But if we didn't, I just want to give you a heads up, you might see the draft EIR and the draft general plan published for public review, probably in the early September timeframe.
Well, thank you. Well, if that's our meeting, uh, to close and adjourn it to the next regular Planning Commission meeting of September 13th, um, at some 30. Thank you and good evening to everybody.